All right, we want to go ahead and welcome everybody tonight. We're running just a hair late here, and apologize for that, but we had an amazing event just prior to this. With that, we'll call the meeting to order for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. It's Monday, April 23rd, 2018. Somebody like to read the approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda of May, Monday, April 23rd, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forward, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote.
Director Yanholt?
Aye.
Director Borchettine?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Chacobo?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. With that, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, for the superintendent's report.
Thanks, President Laberty. So, we received very important news from the Office of Civil Rights recently, that the four-year-old civil rights investigation in discrimination on the basis of race when disciplining students has been dropped. The matter's been resolved, and there have been no findings against the district, and the individual complaints which instigated the district-wide investigation were also resolved in the district's favor. While the OCR ruled there was no wrongdoing, we've been and will continue to be committed to improving our efforts in all areas, including in the area of equity, which is one of our core beliefs that drives our work. This ruling really does help us move forward, the important work underway with equity, innovation, and delivering on the promise of every learner future-ready. As you recall, Secondary Language Arts facilitator Erin Thompson and her team represent our district in a nationwide network of educators at the front lines of the initiative to use openly licensed digital resources to replace commercial textbooks in the classroom. Erin was invited to represent our district at an invite-only national conference on open educational resources last month. She also participated as a panelist to share her insights on mentoring and support structures for implementing OER resources in the classroom. Convening at the conference were a variety of Department of Ed leaders, U.S. Department of Ed and Office of Ed tech representatives, national education associations such as ASCD and ISKME, as well as university and pre-K-12 leaders. As one of four districts in the state and 114 in the country currently immersed in this initiative, it's safe to say that we're leading the way in this work nationwide, and that the invitation extended to Erin to represent our district at last month's conference is an indication of that. In fact, Erin and her team have recently been invited to submit a presentation proposal for the Open Ed Conference in New York in October. What a wonderful opportunity for others across the nation to see CRCSD represented by a leader in this nationwide initiative. Congratulations also to Vicky Dostal, 7th grade literacy and science teacher at Wilson Middle School, and her student Mario. Mrs. Dostal provided her students with an opportunity to participate in the Daughters of the Revolution Writing Contest as an extension of their literacy work. Mario won the contest for his essay on imagining what it would have been like to live in 1918 during World War I. His essay explored the pros and cons of the challenges this war introduced to society, and how he imagined those changes would impact the United States in the years to come. Mrs. Dostal says of Mario, "He's a wonderful student to have in class. He contributes to Wilson Middle School in many ways. He has a passion for writing that's hard to come by. I see him going far in his future." Mario says of what he hoped to accomplish in his essay, "I hope people appreciate that we are living in a time that's much better than the past and to not take it for granted." Finally, the Iowa Business Council, made up of 25, the 25 largest employers in the state, announced recently that it has formed the Business Education Alliance, a group designed to recruit, hire, and keep more workers in the state's workforce. As one of the 17 members of the alliance, I'll be working alongside other leaders in business and education to create and implement strategies that better align business and education to meet current and future workforce needs. I'm excited about this work and its direct connection to our future-ready vision and focus on workforce that we'll hear more about tonight. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Dr. Buck. Now, are there any reports from board members? Gary?
... Policy and Legal Issues Conference in Des Moines. It was pretty interesting, but the most important thing that I walked away from is the issues around security. Continuing to face as school districts, public entities, and a few tips, but it's it's... To move forward. I think in particular, as we start looking at the one-to-one. The other is just where we are with the legislation. Well, they're working on their own dime now. They ran out of their... Everything seems to be, not seems to, everything is at a standstill until they figure out the budget problem. The online IASB meeting last week, lobbyist said that they see the session maybe going into the second week of May. Yes, he has a great deal of interest in the... Went through, sailed through the House. Has some difficulties in the Senate. It's, according to lobbyists, it's going to be, need bipartisan support to be able to move forward. Bouchers, another issue. It wouldn't bring up a bill towards the end. There's some large spending bills. Be aware that something doesn't get...
Thank you, Gary. Other board reports or comments? Raphael?
Just really quick, over the last couple of weeks, I've had an opportunity to make some school visits, which, you know, in our dreary days of snow and winter and spring, it was nice to see some energy being in some buildings, so I want to thank the principal at TAF, Gary Hatfield, and his staff for letting me take a look and wander around and kind of see the work that they do. Stopped by Coolidge while I was over there. Talked with Greg O'Connell as well, wanted to thank his staff as well for letting me take a look at some of the programming things that they do. More towards the northeast side, I had, and the southeast side, had a chance to stop by and see firsthand at McKinley, the Bear Cove Food Bank that serves students and families. Thanks to Kim Seaworth, she's a nurse there, to kind of see firsthand the need that's there and the support that, you know, the donations from other organizations in the city provide directly to those kids and to their families. Thanks to Mrs. Martinez also for getting me, you know, in there to take a look and taking a look at some other things. Also had a chance to stop by the Bulljolt, and I would highly suggest if any of you guys need a coffee or some type of pastry in the morning, at Franklin. Got to work with a few students there, as well as Amanda Saunders, she's a teacher there, Erin Woodwick, Mercedes Hayes, and Jeffrey Black, so it's fun.
Other board comments? Jennifer?
Just that, wow, that's really loud. Sorry. Just that President Laberty and Director Jansen and myself were able to go to the National School Word Association in San Antonio, Texas, and learned a lot of really valuable information. So, that was, that was good that we were able to go there and, and bring back some information to help supplement what we already have underway.
I'll just add, it was, it was an amazing trip. We toured a 2 million square foot Toyota factory that's all robotics, that puts out one Toyota truck every 60 seconds. We got behind-the-scenes tour, and they've connected with Alamo Community College for the Alamo Academies. So, it's, it's all about getting advanced, advanced manufacturing degrees before they even graduate. They've got internships, just doing all kinds of cool things, and so, watch out, Dr. Buck, the board members are kind of excited about these things now, so I don't know.
It was, it was nice to hear them talk about how they, they worked with the city to identify where the projected gaps were going to be in their working population, and then started building the partnerships and to create that pipeline to keep students in their community, and it was a, it was a great experience. And Jennifer and I also had the benefit of going to Culinary Institute session and learn about how they're partnering with the culinary, the original, as they like to say, the original CIA, Culinary Institute of America, and how they're getting in contact and connecting with kids very early.
Jennifer, went to a great session. Do you want to just mention that one briefly with the...
There was a lot of great sessions.
The dollars.
But there's a possible additional funding source that...
There'll be an ask for public comment, and if that happens, that'll be an additional funding source that'll support initiative that we have moving forward with technology. So, that'd be great.
I went to a few sessions about new schools and buildings. Got to meet with the staff from the Austin, Texas ISD, who just passed a $1.1 billion bond referendum, which was pretty amazing to hear about their process and things that they've done, and it's pretty much on target with a lot of things that we've done, just on a smaller scale. So, anyway, good, good information and great board learning, I think, and we'll send along to the rest of the board any handouts that we got from those sessions. So, anything else? All right. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. We have two requests to speak before the board tonight. We just asked that you keep in mind that we have five minutes per presenter. Laurel Day, the board secretary, will keep the five-minute time on the monitors. When you approach the podium, make sure that you speak right into the microphone. Tell us your name, your address, and if you're representing any organization, that would certainly be helpful, and we appreciate you being here tonight. So, first is Karen Swanson. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you. I am here, Karen Swanson, 2500 Edgewood Road. In my capacity, as Executive Director of the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation, on behalf of the trustees, I am here to present our quarterly report. Scott Drazimsky, our chair, has been traveling significantly, and so he's asked me this time to give the report on his behalf. Quarterly updates from the school foundation. We are moving forward on our 2018-2020 strategic plan directives. The two major focuses are growing the fiscal agent program as well as increasing the senior scholarship program. An additional outreach will be four new alumni funds that we will be starting, where each high school will have its own fund and allow us to fundraise, due to our very unique setup in our district, that we are not a sole high school, school foundation, and capitalizing on the alma mater alignment that graduates of the district have. They don't necessarily have an alignment to being a graduate of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, but they do have a, an alignment with being a Jayhawk, or a Cougar, a Phoenix, or a Warrior. So, we're working on getting that implemented on our end. End of the school year means a lot of things for the school foundation. The second annual senior walk will be up and going next month, so watch for that. We are putting into place some of the things that we learned in our first annual and working out some of the kinks, so hopefully things will be even better this year. We are deep in the middle of the staff recognition program, going out to honor staff that are celebrating milestone anniversaries with the district, and senior recognition nights when a foundation rep is always present to present our nearly 40 now senior scholarships that we hold at the school foundation. Also, we are in the process of going to be implementing about $60,000 worth of school project grants, which is our biggest grant program every spring, and we have just closed the application on Friday for the 2018 professional development grants, which is our way of assisting our educators in receiving some funding to increase either a certification status, start a master's degree, attend a conference or a workshop or something over the summer. So, those applications were taken through Friday. We'll be announcing those in early May. That's basically it for the last quarter, to keep you up to date and tell Scott is here again the next time, and please know that we're always here as a resource. If there's anything that we can ever do to assist in the fundraising realm, we're happy to do that. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Karen, for all you do, and the, the board of the foundation. We appreciate that, and I know the teachers and staff in the district appreciate that as well, so thank you. Next, we have Mr. Todd Lund. Welcome, Mr. Lund.
I'm Todd Lund, 520 Lime Rock Drive Northwest. I'm here to talk a little bit about the architect of record. Just want to make sure the board's informed of kind of how I see the process went. So, it looks like you started off with, with 15 committee members, and it looks like it's a wide variety of different people and different skill sets, and there was two, two main scoring, qualitative, and overall cost. Overall cost was 40 percent, qualitative was 60. So, I guess how it worked is the, the firms were given a, an idea of what kind of questions would be asked, and then they came in and had an interview with, with the 15 committee members, and they all rated them based on their answers. So, when I look at this data after round one, it looks like there was a clear winner, like eight. They scored a 90.08. The next closest was 81.59. So, I'm a little confused why there was even a round two, because it, there's a clear winner, and, and the clear winner was actually $300,000 cheaper than, than the, the third place that eventually won. So, I'm a little confused why, why the committee decided it, because when I talked to Dr. Buck, originally it sounded like one phase, find out who, who has the best score and, and go from there, but I guess the committee thought, let's go for a, a second round, take the top three contenders, and let's ask a whole new round of questions, and let's throw out everything we, we learned before. Let's not consider costs, let's not consider anything but these new six topics. So, I'm also confused about that. So, cost doesn't matter now? We just spent, what, two years saying we're not going to have enough money to, to support our buildings, and now, now $300,000 doesn't matter to, to the board or the committees? And all this went through an oversight committee, the Master Facility Oversight Committee? I, I didn't hear one question saying, so, so why doesn't cost matter now? I, I think it's pretty important when, when we're trying to build new schools and you say, we need all this money for, for new schools because we can't maintain our old, old buildings. $300,000 could do a lot, but I guess that, that just doesn't matter? So, so then round two, of course, I, I'm not sure what kind of questions were asked, but why throw out all the previous data? Shouldn't, shouldn't you consider some of that? Because if you look, it's almost a nine-point, after round one, there's almost a nine-point difference, and then throw out all that data and say, let's start over, just doesn't seem right to me. This is supposed to be more about actual data, but it seems like, did, did people, were they concerned about a local company, since we basically are going to hire a local company? Something like that seems more emotion-driven and not, not fact-driven. And I'm sure that the board's going to come, and they're going to approve this, but after listening to the oversight committee, they, they don't ask questions. Who, who asks questions about this process? I didn't hear one good question about the cost, and, and I'm sure the board's not going to really be concerned about cost. They've, they've already got the recommendation. We need some kind of oversight, just, it's basically rubber stamped from the, the oversight committee, and now the board's going to rubber stamp this decision. We, we need to have some kind of process where people, maybe it's not the board, maybe it's the oversight committee, ask some, some good questions and see, see if this is the right thing to do. So, when you go in, in five years, 10 years, when you need more money, and you come to the public and say, well, our, our middle schools are, are collapsing, we need more money. Well, apparently you didn't care about that five years ago when, when you said $300,000, let, let's just go with, with a different company. I mean, that, that should matter to everybody. I mean, you, you need to know why, why you're a board member, isn't it to do the, the best for the, the community? You, you're not just up there to let some other committee say, okay, they, they decided for this company, it costs $300,000 more, we'll approve it anyways. No, you've got to make some decisions. Don't, don't leave it on the, the other committee and say, well, we, we didn't have any part of this. It was all up to the committee. No, you, you're the ones that, that count. Your vote counts. So, so make sure you, you ask some questions and say, so, are we going to get savings since we went with the local company? What, what's the, the purpose in, in a process if, if the outcome isn't the one you want? So, you say, let's do a phase two. That, that's how, how this whole process, that's what it seems like to me, is the process came out with a clear winner, and then you said, well, let, let's back up and start over. That, that should never happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. There's a presentation later in the meeting under the administration that will discuss that issue, so. All right. Seeing that there we have no other requests to speak before the board, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that board members would like to prove for que, poll for questions or further comments? Gary?
Yes, I'd like to poll BA 18350 and BA 18317. Dealing with our contracts, some of our employee groups.
Okay. Are there any other items that board members would like to poll for questions or comment?
So, along with that, with 317, I just needed that as a separate vote.
Any other items? Okay, Gary, so BA 18315 and 18317, the two contracts.
Go ahead. Do you have any questions?
For comments?
Sure.
Yeah.
The reason I polled it is that, again, both of these items deal with our... Negotiating with our groups, our bargaining groups. A year ago, the state legislation, major changes in our collective bargaining law. These changes were not something that Iowa School Word Association was advocating for. It was, our board was, went far beyond what we thought would be just a tweaking in the bill. As a, as a result, it, it... Majorly, I had an impact on how we negotiated this year. Not pleased with the process. Think that we could have been, it could have been better to, the whole process could have been served better if we would have stayed closer to our original contracts with those groups. I will approve the negotiations. I want to see teachers get their contracts. They approved the, they have approved the tentative agreement. Yes, there will be a motion to... I do hope that as we move forward, and the next time that we do have to, the process was better for all groups, for employees groups, move to understand the process, to thinking and where we're going, and hopefully maybe some, hopefully maybe some changes Those are my comments, and...
Any other comments about those?
I will just say, Gary, I think that as a board member for 11 years, that the district and all, all boards across the state and all public education entities are facing times of scarce resources, and there are a lot of needs out there, as you're aware of, and I think that both sides, under this new collective bargaining agreement, probably could have started out in a different place, but I think that we ended up in a very good place for all of our staff, and I think that I appreciate that all of the groups worked together with administration and the staff in our buildings to come to these bargain agreements, that most of them are for five years, so I don't think that we'll have to look at this. I think from board's direction, administration did exactly what we needed them to do, whether they started out or some thought it should have started out or not. So, I just want to say that, that I am pleased where we ended up. I do appreciate the work that our bargaining teams on both sides did to get to this point, and it was not easy for anyone in this process, and we're seeing that across the state, we're seeing it in higher education, public education, and unfortunately, it has more to do with scarce resources for teaching kids and the future of our state than it does about the staff, so that's what I would like to say.
President Laberty, I'd just add that you hit on a point that I think is very true, that the, the funding for education in this state is not adequate in, in your decision to... My hope is that all entities that are, that are concerned about public education, that we work together to, to be able to improve the economic, the economics of public school funding in this state.
Jennifer?
It's going to be loud again. I also would like to comment that I was not comfortable with where we started and was not happy with the process, but was also very vocal about sharing that and felt that I was heard by this board, so I do thank you for the consideration. I, I hope, moving forward, that we will start in a different place when we're looking at contract again.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some vote.
This, this is minus BA 18317, which will poll for a separate vote per request of Raphael, so. I'll, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote due to the personnel report, and BA 18315, again, BA 18317 will be polled for a separate vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Borchettine?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Yanholt?
Aye.
And now for a separate vote on BA 18317, the terms and conditions of employment for the bargain employees in SEIU Local 199, Education Office Professional Union Secretaries, SEIU Local 199, Employees International Union Custodians, Cedar Rapids Organization of Teacher Associates, and United Brotherhood of Carpenters, and Joiners of America, the carpenters. So, this is also a, a roll call. Okay. So, all of those in favor of approving...
It's a roll call.
Oh, it is a roll call. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Director Borchettine?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Chacobo?
Epstein.
And that was very exciting because as I said, we started with just kiddos at Harrison and Van Buren and now we see friends from all the elementary schools that we serve that you support. And our super sites, we had six of them last summer, Arthur, Harrison, Madison, Taylor, Truman and Wright, and we did serve 782 students. In our next slide, it shows what was new. Oh, I get to do. Thanks, Mark. You're so good. Look at that. What was new last summer was that Taylor Elementary School was added. We were not able to add Taylor, serve them at all, even though, as you all know, it is one of the highest need schools in our district because it was a year-round school and it didn't have that summer breather that we needed to have an adequate program. It also means we had to have it totally privately funded. We received a 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. It's from the Department of Education, funded by the federal government. We could not write Taylor into the program originally because it was a year-round school. So we totally privately fundraised, thanks to great donations by the United Way of East Central Iowa, Chris and Suzie DeWolfe, to make it possible for us to serve Taylor because it is pretty expensive to do that with no federal support. The Cedar Rapids School District, the lunch friends provided all of the food, more than 45,000 meals. Every student receives breakfast and lunch in our seven-week program and that's a really big deal. We recognize that some days, the only reason why they're getting up early to come to school in the summer is because they're getting breakfast. And we did add three more days. That was a recommendation from Vic Jarvis, who's our contact at the State of Iowa for this 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. And it was a great suggestion. It was made a little bit more expensive, but it meant that our kids got a little bit more dosage and now they get seven weeks of programming over the summer. And we are delighted to see that even though we made it longer, we still had an average attendance of 27-plus days. That felt good. Sort of a snapshot of Kids on Course University by the numbers, our cash budget is over $600,000. The 21st Century grant covers $225,000 of that, but the rest is privately fundraised through this community. The biggest donor being the Zach Johnson Foundation after that federal grant. If you count all the in-kind stuff, it's more of a million-dollar program. And when I'm talking in-kind, those $45,000 meals, we don't have to pay anything out of our fundraising budget because it's through a partnership that the federal government has with local school districts to provide food for at-risk kids. But if we had to do this all on our own, rent the space, make the food, it would be more than a million-dollar-a-summer endeavor. We hire, we, Amy Evans hires 80-plus people to work over the summer for this and each kiddo gets four-plus field trips. When it comes to the students that we serve, it is very important that Kids on Course University eliminate all access barriers or barriers to access. So when we look at this, we need to be really honest of are we serving the kids who need this regardless of what situation they're finding at home, what their transportation looks like. A lot of our teachers look like me. A lot of the kids we serve do not. And is that a barrier without naming it or without realizing it? And what we're finding is no. More than 77% of the kids that attended last summer were eligible for free and reduced price lunch during the school year. Almost 45% of them identify as children of color and more than, well, almost 29% of them have an IEP during the school year. That means they receive special education services during the school year. And then 15% of them receive English Language Learner Services during the school year, which means English is not their first language at home and their proficiency is not at a level that they can, that they don't need extra support. So, any questions about that? A lot of numbers. A journalist, we don't do numbers well. Present company excluded from the Gazette. And then our results, probably what you're waiting for. So what we do is we look at the testing the district already does. The district tests every elementary school student for the FAST and we look at their CBM scores. Why? Because you guys, that's what you guys carry about, the CBM scores. And we found when you all tested them before summer and then summer happened and then you tested when they got back, 49.9% of the students grew. Our goal is that 40% grow. What we recognize for students, especially those facing poverty, not losing ground over the summer is a win. So we hope to hold them steady. But the fact that almost half grew over the summer is a stunning achievement and speaks so highly to Amy Evans and the work that she does as an educational professional. I'm really a fundraising volunteer. She's the one doing the heavy lifting, so this is her celebration. 80% of students grew in their math scores. Amy tested them the first week and the last week of the seven-week program. That's where that data point comes from. We also survey students and work with the University of Iowa College of Public Health, Dr. Miriam Landsman. She compiles, if you want one, all of our research or all of the data. So it's not me saying it, it's her saying it and I take it out of her book. And she also collects all of our survey data. And 100%, this is the first time this has happened, 100% of the teachers said that they have observed student growth in math, reading and writing because of this program over the summer. These are teachers who taught in the program over the summer. And then of our parents, 97% said if their students were invited again, they would sign them up. Students do have to be invited. They have to have scored below grade level benchmark at least once in the previous year. They don't have to qualify based on teacher recommendation or by free reduced lunch status, but they do have to have a proven reading need. This maybe shows what would happen if this program, for whatever reason, were not made available. For the first time, we have a comparison group. Amy was able to pull data on a group of students who qualified and whom we invited, but for whatever reason, families said, "No, thanks." It's not compulsory. We tracked their data when they came back to school this year and sadly, their data is the green dotted line. They lost, on average, if they were invited and did not attend, 5.79% drop from benchmark. Only the people at this table know what that means, right? Okay. It's very hard to explain. 100% is benchmark or 1.0. They dropped almost six percentage points from benchmark over the summer. And where you see students who were invited to Kids on Course University and did attend, that's that mild rise red line. And really, we'd be happy if it were a flat line. But the fact that when you average them together, they grew 0.79% toward benchmark is a great accomplishment for those 780-plus students. But we really gotta do something about kids who qualify and opt not to come because the alternative, that dotted line heading in the wrong direction, means that this school year was a lot tougher for those kids. What's new this upcoming summer, we're going from six sites to four. Why? Because you're doing a lot of construction and we have to be able to be in buildings that are safe and have like boilers that work. So we're going to be at Kenwood, Grant, Johnson and Taylor. Once again, we have private funding to make Taylor a thing and we're excited about that. And because we're gonna have more students per site, we are also bringing on facilitators at each of the four sites to help with that connecting to family piece, maybe some behavior supports piece. But there is also some cost savings when you go from six sites to four. What questions do you have?
Questions?
Beth, how many kids were in the group that were selected but did not participate? It is, it is more than 1,100. Oh, I mean, oh, who, total, I'm thinking total. So the comparison group, I do have that. I mean, I'm thinking of all the kids we invite total, like we're inviting right now. And we invite more than 1,000.
And the other thing, Mary, you should know is that when you think about our FAST data, you know, if you look at all of our elementaries, we range anywhere from around 50% proficient to about 84% proficient. So when you think about that, we do have a large number of kids still that are not.
Yeah. So there were 140 students in the comparison group, but to have reading scores for both when the school year ended and when the school year started, we only had reading scores for 71. So 71 students represent that blue line that went that way. So about 10% of our total population by comparison. One thing we know about families that opt out, we also looked at their data and we found they started lower. They started more deficient in reading than our friends who were invited and were also deficient and came. So what we know about our families who are opting out, they are often facing more barriers or higher walls to hop over to find success. And some of that is around homelessness and around secure housing. And so when we had 140 kids in our comparison group, but we only got data on 71 because many of them disappeared over the summer, that tells me we're touching on a community need and that is safe, secure, affordable housing.
That's kind of along the lines of, you know, what I was gonna ask, what those barriers might be or, you know, what is it or is it even, is there even a data point that says what's preventing you or, you know, what are the reasons why this, this is not?
We anecdotally ask.
Okay.
In the beginning, when the program first started, it was a lot of, "I don't know what you are. I don't know if I trust you. I don't want my kid to have to go to summer school." There was that punitive feeling to it. And then their friends and neighbors went and they realized it is a lot of fun. It is a lot of support. It's a lot of food. And it's the things that make an eight-year-old want to get up at 8:00 in the morning to get to the bus. And that same eight-year-old might not be so excited during the school year because you don't go swimming during the school year. Usually.
Right.
So going, you said the super sites, you're going from six to four. Well, students need to be transported to the super sites and have arrangements been?
That was one of the other reasons we went to four, actually. When we talked with Transportation as we debriefed last fall, they said it would maybe be easier if we could look at some kind of neighborhood locations for busing and get fewer, you know, stops, but yet get families to those locations and then they bring them into the schools that they're coming to. So, and another thing is if for some reason your daycare, summer program, whatever it might be, is on the other side of town, then maybe the school that you would normally feed into, we're accommodating for that as well. So it will get you a bus to whatever is the closest site of wherever you're gonna be in the summer. And that, Amy is the expert on that as far as trying to make sure that that all works out with Transportation.
Great. One other thing that is new this year, and it was piloted last year, is the program ends at 1:30 in the afternoon. This is hugely inconvenient, we recognize, for many families who are at work or at school or at that time of day. So we asked, begged John Tursey with Boys and Girls Club to consider supporting students starting at 1:30. It doesn't exactly fit his business model, but he, he went with us and it was beautiful. It was a wonderful success story. He worked with Food and Nutrition at the Cedar Rapids School District to be able to offer those students who stayed with Boys and Girls Club a third meal. So they then had dinner and care until 6 o'clock. So as a family, as a parent, you know, you have care from 8:30 in the morning until 6 o'clock in the evening for seven weeks of the summer at no cost. That was really a game changer for a lot of families and we told that story repeatedly to anybody who would listen. And now we have our friends at Five Seasons Learning Centers, Waypoint, YMCA, Jane Boyd, joining that push to provide care starting at 1:30 and until 6:00 PM and having that evening meal. So a lot of success there. A lot of credit goes to John Tursey for being the first to sort of jump in the deep end.
That's great. Hey, Beth, I have a question about what methods of communication for the invitation? How is that, how are families invited to participate? Is it email, text, phone call, personal ask? All of the above?
Yeah. At the parent-teacher conferences in February, teachers are communicating to parents that this is an opportunity I want you to keep your eye out for. Amy has, they're tailored to each school, but it is a form that those teachers hand the guardian and have that personal conversation with at conference time because often during that conference time, teachers are having to deliver some not awesome news about academic performance. So it's nice to follow that up with, "Oh, we've got this free opportunity." Then we also, the window opened last week, I believe, for families actually start enrolling two weeks ago. So they got their packets and the packets are given from the teacher to the child, put in the backpack. Sometimes it makes it home. There's a lot of follow-up on that. I got an email from a parent yesterday, "I'm waiting on my packet," and contacted Kenwood and they're like, "It's on his desk. He left it." So we try to shore that up as much as possible, but since not every child is invited, you can't just put it on the website and say, "Download it at your leisure." Also, a lot of our families who need this most are not going to have consistent internet access, so that would be a moot point. But it's a lot of personal touches. I go and have lunch with the Taylor kids and get them excited about swimming over the summer. We do whatever it takes.
I think our building staff help a lot. I think our IDS in the buildings and our teachers are out there trying to make sure they get to be part of this because I agree, what Beth was saying in the beginning, it was like, "Oh, I don't know if I want my kid to come to school in the summer." But now it's, "I want to be part of that." And we have kids that are excited. We have families that are excited and we have staff that are excited.
Are you able to accommodate everybody who wants to participate or do you hit like a capacity or?
We do have a capacity. We have not hit it. Capacity is 900 students. We've been, we've been fortunate that we haven't had to turn kiddos away. As we have grown each year, will we hit up against that potentially? Be a good problem to have.
Beth, thank you so much and those that are working with the program. It's, it's nice to see good news.
Tell me about it.
We have a program that has measurable success and pretty impressive success too. And it just, you know, again, I go to my legislative thing that there is, with funding, there is ways that we can make an impact, that we can do. It isn't just throwing money at an issue, but with the resources, we have a way of really impacting these kids. The ones that don't, aren't able to do the Kids on Course in the summer, do they, are they picked up during the school year with the Kids on Course? Do they, do we find them that they're back in? And I just wonder if, you're never gonna get 100%. It just, it isn't. But whenever there is a need, you can't just, you know, you don't want to turn your back on it too. But there could be some kind of a special resource program or emphasis on those that could give them a little bit of boost. Obviously, the summer program is best because they're coming in from day one.
So that while Kids on Course University is able to serve students who qualify from all 21 elementary schools, Kids on Course, very confusing, very similar names, is the year-round program, really the school year program that serves just three of our elementary schools, Van Buren, Grant and Harrison. And we do, if we know a student qualifies for KCU, those families know us. We have been consistently in front of them and giving them every opportunity to sign up because Kids on Course, what the beautiful magic is, so you go to KCU over the summer and get seven weeks of intensive academic enrichment and nutritional support and social, emotional, you know, love all summer long. And then you go to the school of the year, now you're getting twice a week tutoring and you're getting scholarshiped for whatever baseball or whittage or whatever your, you know, athletic or artistic endeavors are, that Kids on Course underwrites that, thanks to the Zach Johnson Foundation. And you have a consistent mentor in your building all year long, but you're still not quite there. Something about reading, it's still hard. Maybe you have an IEP around reading. Now you get to do KCU again. And so that extra dosage, we know what the teachers are doing between the bells is working. We're seeing great growth amongst students who need help most. What we're not seeing is them getting to grade level as rapidly as we need them to. So we think these extra dosage this summer.
If there could be some kind of a special resource program or emphasis on those that could give them a little bit of boost. Obviously, the summer program is best because they're coming in from day one.
So that while Kids on Course University is able to serve students who qualify from all 21 elementary schools, Kids on Course, very confusing, very similar names, is the year-round program, really the school year program, that serves just three of our elementary schools, Van Buren, Grant and Harrison. And we do, if we know a student qualifies for KCU, those families know us. We have been consistently in front of them and giving them every opportunity to sign up. Because Kids on Course, what the beautiful magic is, so you go to KCU over the summer and get seven weeks of intensive academic enrichment and nutritional support and social, emotional, you know, love all summer long. And then you go to the school of the year, now you're getting twice a week tutoring and you're getting scholarship for whatever baseball or whittage or whatever your, you know, athletic or artistic endeavors are, that Kids on Course underwrites that. Thanks to the Zach Johnson Foundation. And you have a consistent mentor in your building all year long, but you're still not quite there. Something about reading, it's still hard. Maybe you have an IEP around reading. Now you get to do KCU again. And so that extra dosage, we know what the teachers are doing between the bells is working. We're seeing great growth amongst students who need help most. What we're not seeing is them getting to grade level as rapidly as we need them to. So we think these extra dosage, the summer, the school year tutoring, theoretically we'll get them there. And we're really excited the district has two data geek, data people who, who can put some meat behind what I'm saying and look at that longitudinally. If you get that kind of extra dosage, what does that look like? I'm delighted that you guys have the people power to make that happen.
We're excited that we have that as well, Beth. So, yes, thank you. So what else can the district or the board do to support?
Money.
What you're doing? So, so yeah, yeah. So you probably have heard like money's pretty tight right now.
Yes, I've noticed.
So fundraising is critical and we can't thank Zach Johnson Foundation enough and the other donors in the community and the staff and the volunteers that helped make all of this happen throughout the year and the summer. So that's invaluable. Is there anything else, anything on the wish list that isn't high dollars from the district at this point?
The only thing is don't change your ruler. So keep it FAST CBM. Because it was Fontes and Penel, then FAST A-reading, and now it's FAST CBM. So people ask like, oh, kids who were in your program in second grade four years ago, how are they today? I'm like, huh. I mean, I, I don't have a consistent measuring tool.
Does that answer the state? State, oh, okay.
So Gary, get on that.
Yeah, get, yeah.
The district, from moment one, made themselves available and were champions and cheerleaders for making this happen. And I assumed that's how all school boards and all school district leadership and all frontline folks worked with outside nobodies. That is not how it works in other school districts. So the fact that we make this happen is due in large part because we use your buildings, your custodians, your kitchen staff, your brain power with Val. I mean, I email Amy every few, I don't even know what, trying to figure out some, I'm not an educator, so I don't understand your curriculum words and your latticing. What is that called? Scaffolding. What? That's something an architect would do, right? And at every turn, there's been an incredible amount of support. And I'm not usually a very trusted person because I have another job, but as a volunteer, everyone's very trusting and open with me and I, it's just, it's awesome. So thank you.
Again, we appreciate all that you're doing for us and all the volunteers. And if we can do more of it, better of it, let us know how we can do that.
Come visit this summer. That would be one thing.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So you'll get us that information, right?
I sure will.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Beth.
Thanks, Beth. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to the next item in our work session, which is future-ready learning profile of a graduate. So Noreen Bush, welcome.
Thank you.
We're excited to hear this.
Yes. Well, that's, I'll say an anecdote from the former presentation. Val and I were having a conversation early in the year and there was a recollection from one of the teachers over the summer from Kids on Course. She said, "I wish I could teach like this all year, how I do it on Kids on Course." And we said, permission granted. We may not be able to take trips to the pool every day, but I think teachers feel unleashed in that environment. And that certainly resonates for our next presentation about Every Learner Future Ready. So you'll notice the date was April 10th. We were going to talk about this the last meeting and glad that we can all be together for this meeting to bring this learning forward. So you know our vision, Every Learner Future Ready. Got it? It was awesome. So, but behind that vision is also a mission. And our mission, of course, is to ensure all learners experience a rigorous and personalized learning experience. So they have a plan, a pathway and a passion for their future. So when we thought about that vision and mission, we together crafted our district strategic plan. So we're going to zoom in on two of our five focus areas tonight. And so we're going to look at specifically our future-ready learning story and our future-ready intercultural mindset and our work towards equity tonight. And what were some of the metrics that we put in the plan early on in the year and how we're doing towards that this evening? So, these were the metrics from our strategic plan for those two focus areas. So tonight, we're going to look at the profile of a graduate. I'm going to give you an update on where we are with our competencies and also just a picture of a sample rubric that supports one of those competencies. Then we're going to zoom down to that second to the last bullet under future-ready learning metrics around our multiple pathway data so that you can see specifically our high school students and the courses and the pathways that they're enrolling in to get experiences to prepare for their future. And we'll look at that in two ways. Current courses their students are enrolled in as well as the projected course enrollment for next year and where we are with current state. And then finally, we're going to give you a KNAV update, which is Cooter Navigator, which is the tool that we're using that each student has an individualized plan for their career and future. Then if you shift over to the second part of the screen here, we're going to look at that last bullet and our work towards intercultural development metrics around equal opportunity schools, which is a partnership we've had this year specifically targeting our underrepresented populations and AP enrollment. But that learning, although hyper-focused on AP enrollment, has allowed us to get some strategies about other pathway data and ways in which we can help students choose pathways, not just in AP, but in other pathways as well. So again, I think you're familiar with this graphic. When we think about equality versus equity, we've presented lots of different pathways for students traditionally in our system. And so those pathways have existed, but sometimes we haven't provided each individual student with what they need to get access to those pathways. So unintentionally, we've created what are called hidden opportunities in our system. They exist, but students don't know that they exist or they're perhaps not specifically encouraged to think about those different pathways. So we want to think about ways in which we're opening those pathways so that every student knows what's available to them. That's that K Navigator tool that's helping us understand each individual student and their needs. So in order to begin with the end in mind, I think you all are familiar with the School Improvement Advisory Committee, also known as CYAC, has been working on the profile of a graduate. Last spring, Mary Ellen led a team around future-ready learning competencies and how we could identify those outcomes for each student. That drafted work came to CYAC and we've met a couple of times this year. Next Monday, we have our last meeting where we hope to synthesize this work and have a formal recommendation to the board to come later, early on in the summer. But we'll talk about that drafted work tonight. So again, this is supposed to be an end outcome for all students in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. What we want for every learner as they graduate from our system so that we have a promise to our community of who we're delivering to our community as they leave us. So just as a reminder, when we think about former schooling, student A, we were pretty clear and have been pretty clear and continue to be really clear about content mastery, which is the student A. You probably think about your own experiences. Go back to your own high school transcript. I think it will probably say English in your letter grade, math in your letter grade, science in your letter grade. And we didn't necessarily focus on competencies. It was interesting, Dr. Buck alluded to the Iowa Business Council, that I had the pleasure of going to that meeting with him recently. And businesses are also creating profiles of their business people and who they want in their business and the skills that they're trying to emulate within their businesses, which looks much more like student B. It's not your math skills and your reading skills in that work environment. It's what kind of communicator are you? What kind of communication skills do you need? Or what collaboration skills do you need? What creativity do you need to get your job done? And notice at the top of student B, though, we can't erase the fact that content mastery is important. We do want all students to know and be able to deliver on the Iowa Core Curriculum, which is very high levels of standards. So these are the projected skills from the jobs report for 2020. And if you look at those competencies, the prior skill set that was projected in 2015, if you look at creativity is at number three here. Few years prior, when they were looking at 2015, what they hoped the top skills would be, creativity was number 10. So within just a few years, creativity went from number 10 to number three in the jobs report as a projected competency for our workers. So this is the information that's helping us craft what Every Learner Future Ready actually means within the context of Cedar Rapids Community School District. So, drumroll. We are landing on those competencies of what we hope for every student in our school district. Critical thinking and problem solving, communication, creativity, collaboration and citizenship. And those would be on top of content mastery. So then the question becomes, how do you measure that stuff, right? How do you look for that and how do you measure it? So what we know is that there is research behind how to measure these skills. So we are in a collaborative with a group called EdLeader 21, and I've spoke about that particular group before with you all. And we're looking at rubrics that would help our teachers recognize what these skill sets could look like in their content. You have a sample in front of you and this one's just an unpacked example from a grade, from 11th and 12th grade, actually. Critical thinking. This particular rubric is several pages long, but just to give you a snapshot look, there are several performance indicators or performance areas. These two examples on this particular page are information and discovery, interpretation and analysis. And it shows teachers and students what critical thinking could look like in a classroom environment, in a learning environment, or even outside of our four walls environment. Interestingly enough, I was speaking to a sibling of mine who's in the business industry whose business has developed rubrics much like schools have to say, this is what it looks like in the work environment, which was really affirming to know that we are on the right path. So these rubrics, we're developing and we're borrowing and taking them from EdLeader 21, but adapting them to our own. And that will be the work for the next year as we can put these in front of teachers and help us make sense as to how they fit within our current curriculum, K-12. So as we think about the former system, we used to be an OR environment, college OR career-ready. And much of what you've already heard throughout this year is we're trying to develop the AND system. So it doesn't mean that we aren't preparing students for college and we're not preparing them for careers. We're thinking about how do we prepare them for both? And that we can't limit a student's options by the curriculum that we put in front of them. So if I think about some of our current systems, which are unintended consequences when we think about course development, when a freshman comes into the high schools, we can't limit their options exiting our system by putting certain math courses in front of certain groups of students in their freshman year. All students need to get through all high content and our standards. So that means all students need to be through advanced algebra or Algebra II. And currently, our system isn't always structured to do that. So high levels of learning and content mastery is very important. So students may not choose to go to college. Students may choose to do something else, but we will not prevent them from that within our system and limit their options when they're with us. In addition to that, exposing students to career readiness is what we're going to talk about next and other options beyond our core curriculum that can help them. So this is, again, hurrah, data analysts, right? They get shout-outs at every board meeting. But this is some data that we've put together just so that you can see our students currently in the high school, grades nine through 12, who are at least taking one future-ready path. So what we already can assume from our data, our ninth graders have less access to that than our seniors do just based on the core curriculum standards. However, we have a pretty good representation here that 64% of our students in our high schools are taking at least one future-ready path or course or experience in our current state. And you can see the difference, the difference between each one of our buildings with that. Metro makes a lot of sense here because they have more upperclassmen than they do underclassmen in that particular building. So here's some specific data headcount. This is, the numbers represent individual students taking courses. So if you look at each one of those course pathways, it goes all the way from Project Lead the Way, CTE stands for Career Tech Education, all the way through Iowa BIG, which that has been part of our conversation, is how many students are enrolling from each one of our buildings. Interestingly enough, Metro is just next door to Iowa BIG, yet we don't have any Metro students reaching into that experience. So that's been, that was a good question for us to ask as to why that's happening, but is that a future possibility? And then looking at our AP numbers and jobs, that's job shadows, not just shadows. Everybody's got a shadow, just so you know. Those are job shadow experiences for our students. The interesting story is if you were to look at the prior year data, job shadows specifically, I'm going to call out, some of our, our professionals within our system weren't even quite aware what was possible for students or what was available to them. And once they had that information, they really got after it. So our district has the most job shadow experiences in our county than any other, and I mean that by percentage, not just counts of heads, of students getting job shadow experiences through the Workplace Learning Connection. And our goal this year is to increase our number of internships for students. Yes.
Just, so this is a headcount, not a percentage. So do you know offhand, what is the total enrollment per each school? Like how many?
Well, I can tell you first, second, third place. So I would say Kennedy is about, is about 1,600.
1,800.
1,800, there we go. And then we go down to Jefferson is next, then Washington, then of course, Metro is only about 350 at this point in time. But that is, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it's 1,400-ish for Jefferson and Wash, and then Kennedy's at 1,800.
And then within this data, you can have the same student across multiple, is that right?
Yes. So one student in CTE could also be that student in AP.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a way that, oh, is it percentage coming up? That same information presented in a percentage?
Yeah, we could get that to you.
Okay, sure.
Mm-hmm. So this is the percentage data a little differently. Maybe this will answer your question, Director Board Shitting. But the multiple pathway data, this is the percentage of each high school who has participated in a future-ready pathway, a student. And so you can see the percentage of students. Oh, there's the total numbers, thank you very much. Jefferson's 1,500, Wash 13, Kennedy 1780, and then Metro 361. I love them. I love Matt and Angela. Hope you can hear that. So if you look at, all the way from AP across the scale here, you can see the percentage of students participating from each building in those pathways. And then this is some interesting data about where we are so far. I would say this is a sentiment of our work with equal opportunity schools. And although you may not think there's a big distinction between these lines, I'm going to fast forward to another slide here. Specifically with equal opportunity schools, we are using some strategies for personal invitation to students, specifically students of color, to be invited into AP course opportunities. And what we're finding is through the survey data through equal opportunity schools, students' narratives were telling us that they either believed they couldn't do it, that they wouldn't be successful, they didn't think there'd be the right support systems in place, or that their friends weren't doing it, so they weren't going to do it. And so we changed our strategy a bit through the course enrollment process. I just want you to know, this is initial data that was collected at the end of March. We have been doing more specific strategies here throughout the spring of more personalized invitation. So I think this would be interesting data to bring back to you in June when we have a better idea of our complete course enrollment. But you can see there's a slight increase with some of our students of color participating in AP courses. But there, even though that was our intentional target and that would include our students, our ELL students as well, there was an unintended consequence that it impacted our students of free and reduced enrollment as well. So if you look at this particular slide, we have had a percentage increase of, from 22% to 28% of free and reduced students enrolling in AP courses just by having some strategy. And some of these strategies, it's interesting, is students name, this is an adult who I think is my person in the building through the survey. So we gave those adults the names of kids who said, "You're this, you're this kid's person. Did you know that?" And so many of the adults were like, "I had no idea." I bet if you extended a personal invitation, because you identified them as well as somebody who could take an AP course, those personal relationships have really been the number-one thing that have made the difference with our students. So this is also interesting data, and this comes back to each one of those career pathways. I'm just going to draw your attention to the bottom two lines, the blue and the orange line. So the blue line is our current enrollment in courses in each of those pathways for our free and reduced students. And the orange line is the current course request from those students. So you can see the orange line, through specific strategy, we have an increase of course requests in the future-ready pathways, just by some targeted strategies. But interestingly enough, if you look at the top two lines, our students who are full-pay students and enrolled, that's the gray line, and their yellow line is the requests, and we've had a dip. So what we're wondering is, was that because we've been hyper-focused on certain strategies with certain students? So we did bring back around our strategies to all students, making reach-outs to all students through K Navigator, and the counselors dug back into the data of enrollment, just to make sure that each student is considering their future-ready pathways. And as you can see, Career Tech Ed has a spike there, and they do a lot of recruitment for their courses and reach-outs to kids to get them encouraged to take their courses. So with that, just a little more information about K Navigator, which is that post-secondary tool that we're using. We've really hyper-focused on our counselors this year, getting familiar with that tool, knowing that tool. But it really can be a tool from, for all of our high school teachers and even our middle school teachers. Our eighth graders have had this tool in front of them as a way to craft their four-year plan, but it's also intended to be a family tool and to have parents have access to this tool as well. So I talked about the from and the to, from an "or" environment to an "and" environment. So going from a former system of choosing a college to the mental model of developing a career interest. From choosing a major to finding a related major or program that's around your passion and your pathway and your interest. And then instead of just an after-college figure-it-out, we really want to help match students to their passions and their interests within the K-12 environment where we can better support them, so they're more ready, when they leave us, to navigate, that's why we love the name of the tool, they can navigate their future. So to scale this up, our administrators are experiencing K Navigator training this month within their admin meetings, so that they too can better support how this looks within their school improvement plans and with the counselors, and so that they can find ways, so for example, you might be familiar with the program called MVP, which is really about a peer support program in our high schools. We've done some initial training with that this year. Could there be a peer process in which students are supporting each other through that, or advisory programs with smaller groups of students with teachers? Everybody's supporting students' future pathway, and it doesn't just live within a counselor's life. If you think about the ratio, specifically at Kennedy High School, you could have between 400 and 500 students to one counselor, and that is a lot. So thinking about all teachers owning the pathway for all students is our goal. This is just the lens of what this could look like from an administrator's point of view. And each one of those little bars shows an administrator how many students, by count and percent, are interested in human services, or how many are interested in marketing, or how many are interested in advanced manufacturing. And so then a principal has an idea too, what the students' passions, interests, and preferences are within their own building. And that's all I have for you for our Every Learner Future Ready data and update. So, any questions from you?
It's very exciting. What questions does the board have?
I just had a question about the rubric language. So the language that's in there uses a lot of very specific, like, jargon that's specific to education. So I'm wondering when that's being communicated to parents, if that's being presented in a different way, so it's more easily understandable.
I think it certainly could. And so we have these great gifts of this package of information that other districts across the nation have collaborated around that work have done. So I think now we need to make sense of it within our own environment. But I agree with you, and not just parent-friendly, but student-friendly too. Like, this makes sense to me with ICAN statements and what that might look like. One thing that was interesting with the Future Ready Learning Task Force last year is looking at a menu of options. So what might the products be at each one of those grade spans in K-2, 3, 5? That would speak and resonate more, I think, to our students and our parents.
I like the fact that everyone's owning this. It's not just the counselors or teachers. It's everybody all together working to ensure a successful pathway for all of our students. So this is great. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Baseline goals.
It is awesome. So in the day job that pays the bills, I work at the University of Rite. And so we're finding there, and I think in our Kirkwood programs, and I talked to Pat Loffler with Career Tech Ed programs, that whole math thing is a real challenge. It's probably one of the top barriers with communication skills being written there. And math, from what I keep understanding, listening to conversations about this, it's not that students need to retake Algebra I or Algebra II and do the whole course over, there's just some concepts maybe within some of those courses. And so how can we support those kids to stay on target, to be ready for whether it's four-year college or the two-year programs or Career Tech Ed programs, and get through that little math barrier? Is it online? Is it, I mean, I listen to Kids on Course and what summer stuff can do, and I see programs that are online, and I hear about the great free things that are being offered anymore. And what else could we do?
So what's interesting is the math standards are written in more conceptual framework, but we have a traditional pathway in that we've divided those standards by courses. So you learn algebra here, you learn geometry here. And so thinking about some more integrated ways, you're talking about application of those math skills. But what we've also done is gone through the, those prioritize, or we prioritize standards to say, these are the heavy hitters. These are what kids really need to know and be able to do. I have been working with Washington High School, actually, has been, this has been their math department's question all year, is how can we design a little differently? And they're actually looking at how they're going to do instruction differently next year with freshmen, with maybe a bigger block of time for those students who might need more support or more application with math. And then I think we have a lot to learn from our schools, I would say Nixon, for example, doing a lot of blended work, and even RCCBA with some of their project-based learning experiences of other ways in which we can pull in the relevancy to math. And then there's that whole piece of mental models and growth mindset. When students have the narrative, I'm not good at math, then they believe they're not good at math. And so we have to create different contexts and different language so that they believe that it's possible, and that maybe we just need to do things differently for them. So it is a quandary that we're asking throughout our system, but I think the relevancy piece, that they can see the relevancy of math within their day-to-day life, but also their potential future as well.
Yeah.
I would just add in tandem to that. When we get into these standards-referenced conversations, it is very difficult not to learn the standards in a standard reference environment. So in a letter grade environment, I cannot know parts of the content and still pass, right? So I can get a C on a portion of a test, I get a B+ or something overall, but the reality is, I didn't learn a portion of that content, right? When you get into a standards-based environment, the level of accountability around the learning completely changes, because you have to demonstrate proficiency in each of those standards, especially when you have the standards that are the you-must-have standards and then the sort of the nice-to-have standards. So I honestly believe the intersection, when we get to that truly personalized learning environment, and you see it at Nixon and the Blended Group, when they get down to the standards and say, is this student really secure in this standard? And if he or she is not secure in that standard, then we need to go back and do some reteaching in real time to get that standard to where that student is secure. So it's a lot of things coalescing, sort of all at the same time. And I'm sure for staff right now, it feels like a lot of moving parts and trying to draw that all together in ways that make sense, and that's really a lot of what you hear tonight. But I'm optimistic about that, so.
We're not just dumping this in the classroom. I mean, this is another year of process where staff are going through professional development and learning about the standards.
And I do think it will be, the competency rubric that I showed you tonight, it will be iterative. I mean, we've got a five-year strategic plan, it'll continue to develop, but the application piece is knowing that these competencies, what our work environment, this is what's interesting. Iowa unemployment rate, like, it's down, right? We're looking pretty good, like, people've got jobs, but we have so many open jobs that people aren't seeking those particular jobs. And so what we're hearing from the work environment is, we need workers, and we need them to have these skill sets, and math is part of that. Like, it's a real deal. So, and as well as the rest of the competency. So we're feeling the pressure, but also we have purpose and relevance for our community to embrace it too.
So one thing, I'll just challenge you, Dr. Buck, a little bit, now that you're sitting on the Business Education Alliance group, is that this is really more than a K-12 systemic issue. This is really a systemic issue across K-16 and into the workforce and the future of Iowa. And it's going to take more than us just putting this strategic plan in place to do this sort of learning in our classrooms. It's going to take working with higher ed, working with the trades, working with business and corporations to find, and breaking down those barriers, so that we don't have kids having to feel like they're failures and go back and retake classes where they really learned most of it. And we've created an artificial barrier where we probably could solve the problem if we all worked on it together. And so this is, I'm hoping, from where I sit, whether, whatever happens in the future, that we can push together as a system for the state to make that happen, because I know that businesses and others want it to happen as well.
Yeah, so I've had the good fortune of hearing the Director of the Iowa Department of Ed, Ryan Wise, speak a couple times in the last week or two. And, you know, one of the things, well, two of the things he talks about is the metrics that matter conversation. So what you're seeing tonight with this movement towards measuring a variety of ways for kids to be successful and to think about pathways going forward, as opposed to a more singular path, is a really great thing. And one of the things we didn't talk about tonight, but we're taking, we'll take even a sharper look at over the coming years, is, and what are our kids doing upon graduation? So yeah, we want them to identify and drive kids to multiple pathways, and then also say, and two years out, what are our kids up to? Because that's the real sort of measure beyond sort of our experience with the kids. So that's in the Metrics That Matter report, and I think that's going to continue to guide our framework for how we're saying, what's our system doing for our students? The second part of it is, and with the Governor's Future Ready Work, 70% of Iowans by 2025 having some type of college experience. That's two-year degrees, certifications, credentials, four-year degrees. Right now, the state of Iowa is about 58%. If every one of our kids graduating out of high schools right now did what we would hope to do, which is college, so defined by that, credential, certification, two and four-year, it wouldn't drive the number to 70% by 2025. So what I've heard him talk about is, and we're also going to have to recapture people in our society, Iowans that are currently underskilled and unskilled, and help them get skilled up in a college definition. So I agree with you 100%. This is not a strictly K-12 conversation, it's not even a strictly K-16 in the conversation. It's K-16 plus other adult workers currently in the workforce who don't have the skills that are going to be needed to get us to 70% by 2025. So we're, so I love it. We're in the right conversation, and there's opportunity.
Lots of opportunity. Others, Gary?
I think we really should feel good as a board and as a district in the direction that we're moving. I think finally, we're coming to our senses of providing multiple pathways. And what I really like about it is that it's engaging the students, the learners, in their future, as they have input into where, what I would like to do and where I would like to go, and success breeds success. And so the only thing, the other thing I would just add is that also too, coming from my elementary background, that it doesn't start in senior high school either, that at the elementary, and you mentioned what we're doing, the Blended at Nixon. As we get students to realize that there are multiple pathways, they're going to be more motivated, engaged, and active, I think, so I think that we should all feel good about the direction we're going and the work we've done.
So could I just kick one more thing in? So the PSYAC is going to be coming back with recommendations on the profile of a graduate.
Yes.
Can you coach me through, or coach us through that?
I can coach you through that. So the competencies that I laid out earlier, so I'll just get that slide back up here. So, here we go. So these are, there's a lot of research around what we call the four Cs, and those would be the first four things that you see on the screen. We've, what seems to be resonating with our community is also citizenship, and what it means to be a global citizen, what it means to be a citizen of our community, and what it means to be a citizen within our school district, as well as the content mastery. So what will happen with this particular competencies is we will have a visual representation of what it means to be a Cedar Rapids Community School District graduate. So you will have in front of you, and I think actually you might have a sample tonight to share with them a little later in the next work session, what a potential graphic might look like that would capture visually what a profile of a graduate and what these competencies might look like. So the hope would be, that is the end goal, but just as Director Ann Holt described, it's not just for high school, it's throughout the whole system. So those rubrics, the one sample rubric I showed you, those, they are broken down by grade spans. It's the same competencies, but making it relevant to K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, and 11, 12. So in those grade spans, they would each have a rubric, and so they would unpack those in those grade level spans of, where does it make sense that we're looking for information and discovery from our students within our curriculum and within their learning experiences? So that we will have eventually a body of evidence in addition to, so if you can imagine a graduate from our system being able to articulate and have evidence of each of these competencies in addition to a GPA and an ACT score. So that they will have all sorts of things to demonstrate who they are and what they've learned and what they know about themselves as they head into the world. That's the big picture.
So, you have a question? Go ahead.
So I'm going to change the perspective on this a little bit.
So I'm thinking about it as in bringing it home, bringing it home to, you know, parents, right? So I'm looking at it as, we're lucky enough to have experienced a little bit of knowledge with this and the direction of the district, and to be able to have a presentation from you, which is awesome, and to have a dialogue with you. But what does it mean to, you know, to my kid, or what does it mean to any parent that has a kid that's going to be traveling along our system? Interestingly enough, what's funny about this is that I actually just received a K Navigator invitation today, this morning.
Yay! It's working!
You know, if I didn't know any of this, and I get that invitation, what does it mean? I mean, as a parent of high school kids and a middle school kid, and having had the opportunity last year where we had, I believe, the multiple pathway discussions at Wash, Kennedy, at Jefferson, that might have been the only connection that some people might be able to put together when they see some of this. So kind of bringing it home, what are we doing to inform parents or keep them engaged or letting them know?
So I think about the parent experience and what is the relationship that they have that's closest to the school, and usually that's through the relationship of a teacher or who their child experiences every day. So from another lens, I too am a parent, and, but my child's in a different system. And I told this story recently, my son's a junior, and there's, he has a student-led conference that he's required to do at each grade level. So in his junior year, we sat down, and he said, I need to tell you about, if you have heard of these things, Mom, in the Iowa Core Curriculum, there are these things called the universal constructs. Well, in the Iowa Core Curriculum, that is the, these critical competencies. So he said, we're focused this year on collaboration and creativity, so I want to tell you how I've certified those things. So for him, it's been coaching through that personalized, they call an advisor, helping him through collecting that body of evidence, but there's a structure in place. But to me, that was the most meaningful thing, is that my own child was bringing the language home and showing me the evidence of his learning and showing me the demonstrations of what he's gained and his gained and his skill sets. And so, it's become an embedded part of his language. But if we don't change our language, then it will not be living. And so, I think our parents will learn it best through their experiences with their children, but those one-on-one conversations with our teachers is, I, is the sweet spot. So, we do a lot of student-led conferences throughout our system, and I think to think about how that looks from pre-K through 12, uh, will be part of the structures that we need to consider. So, it will be probably parent by parent and individual conversations. I appreciate email and newsletters, but that may not what speaks best to all of our parents, but rather the lived experience of their children.
And I think your question's a, a good challenge for us as well going forward, because we've had somewhat uneven implementation of a number of these concepts and ideas. And so, um, as a parent in the district, I can tell you, I've had uneven experiences with my own children and the communication that comes home. And, um, so, I, I think, um, one, let's try to bring resonance to the system that makes sense, and once we have that resonance, really double down on communication patterns, especially to include our, our kids as understanding the content, you know? Because if that kid can come home and say, so I can tell you, my, one of my sons, he came home one day and there was a standard in math, and he smacks this paper down the table and he says, "Developing," I'm not developing on this. He said, "Give me three more problems in the standard. I can do them all. I'm secure." So, but, so I laughed, because I like, I love that, right? Because he's, I don't know where he gets this competitiveness, but, um, but his understanding of the recognition of the content of a standard, and that there's a connection between a standard and this actual content he's learning, and his, I don't know if he actually, I trust the teacher. I, my guess is he was a little more overconfident on that than might have otherwise demonstrated. But that's really where the exciting parts gets into this work, is when kids can really understand and communicate that, and then engage parents differently in the conversation.
So, yeah.
Got it.
Thanks. So, back in the, the early 2000s, when, when our oldest daughter was at Erskine Elementary School, the district changed from letter grades to, I think there were rubrics and there were like, yeah, is that, okay. So, I recall the uproar that happened at that time and how this doesn't mean anything, because it's not an A or a B or a C or a D or whatever. But we all got used to it, and it was much more clear understanding, even though it was at that elementary level, of what our child could do or not do and where they needed help. So, I'm assuming that this is that same sort of transition, just on a bigger scale. Yeah?
And you may recall that we sent home statements, and they were ICANN statements.
Yep.
In more parent-friendly language, rather than what teachers were using.
Yep.
Which was standards-based. So, the ICANN was what the students in.
So, for a lot of our families, a lot of our students, they've already sort of gone through this at the younger levels, and now, this shouldn't be that unfamiliar, I mean, when we get into the high school, upper levels.
And, and just to clarify, just an example, when you as a parent see that your student has an 81% average in a class, that doesn't tell you the skills that they're missing. It may tell you an assignment that they didn't perform well on, but it doesn't tell you the skills. And so, again, uh, just when you're certifying standards at the high school level, it doesn't mean you have to eliminate the letter grade system. That can still exist, and we would expect that it would still exist, especially as we're sending students with their transcript to the University of Iowa. Is that right?
That would be great, yes.
Yeah, right.
We'll take them.
So, as we're sending them out of our system to be Hawkeyes. So, that, that GPA is a common understanding of what that means, but behind that, let's say it's a 4.0 average, it means that the student has certified standards at a high level, not that I got 100% on everything. And so, it just translates what the meaning is of, of a letter grade.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? This is definitely exciting. Thank you to all of you and to PSYAC and everyone that's working on this. It's great work, and, um, it's an ongoing commitment of the board for many, many years. So, thank you again. We're excited about it. All right. Next, we will move on to, um, administration and the agreement related to the Architectural Firm of Record. Steve, Graham, and Dr. Buck, I'll turn it over to you on this.
Do you have any framing comments at all, Dr. Buck?
Uh, no, I, you dive right in, Steve. I'm, yeah.
Anyway, thank you, President Lavery, Board, and Dr. Buck. I, I was listening to Todd's questions, and I just wanted to say publicly, I thank Todd for his interest and his involvement, because he asks really good questions, and I think it helps us focus on the importance of what we're doing here regarding our selection of the Architective Record. So, I was trying to hold my hand down, thinking, I can answer these questions, but I'll just wait for my opportunity to get before you folks. So, I think, just maybe stating the questions and then backing off a little bit and talking about process, because it's really all about the process here in arriving at the selection of our Architective Record. So, um, you know, we had this qualitative and quantitative score set that we used on round one. So, that's a question. Why did we go away from that in round two? Another question is, why did we have round two? Why don't we just have round one, which is a very good question? And why are we considering spending $300,000 more for one firm versus another firm? Why, why would we do that? Great questions. Very, very good questions. So, let me just back up a step here and remind the board that this is a conversation around the Architective Record, which is the basic projects. This is not the future Coolidge School. We'll have a whole nother process looking for the architect to help us design, get the public input, show us the vision. The board, I presume, will be probably more involved in the selection process, but this is about the basic stuff. This is tuck point, roofs, windows, doors. It's not sexy stuff. It's just basic stuff. And so, when we put this RFP together, and this RFP process started back last late August, we had been working diligently to put an RFP together along with Brett Nitschke, legal counsel. We've met with Brett many times. And we wanted to focus on, how can we pinpoint the value of every one of these firms? So, we thought, what better way to do it than to take the five-year PEPAL promise and look at every one of those projects and sort them according to type, roofing, tuck pointing, windows, doors. We had a little, uh, bathroom remodel. We had a big HVAC project over Erskine Elementary School, which is a part of this. And hopefully, with the SAVE extension, the HVAC project and the PEPAL promise at Erskine won't be necessary, because we'll be building a brand-new Erskine School in the future. But we use the data that we have to set a standard. And so, we say to the architects, "A part of this RFP is including Exhibit A." And Exhibit A is a list of projects. Give us your price, firm price. We want to know exactly where you stand as a firm on this particular series of projects." So, that's the quantitative side. Now, we're not required, as a public entity, to provide a contract to the low responsible bidder when it comes to professional services. This is auditing firms, architectural firms, as well as legal firms. So, this idea around a balance between qualitative and quantitative is a very important one, and it's a 60/40 weighting. So, we, we say 60% of the value of a score in the first round is based upon the qualitative features of your firm. How long have you been around? What's your depth and your, your breadth? What's your wheelhouse capacity? Uh, what's your K-12 experience? How well do you work with contractors? What is your level of, 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 uh, what's the word? I'm sorry, I've just had a brain burp here. The, uh, the, the, ah, I just forgot it. Sorry. The need to come back and do rework, uh, it's called...
Change order.
Thank you very much, Dr. Buck. You just bailed me out.
Yeah, it's a little game.
Change order. Okay. So, these are the qualitative questions, and we had about 25 of those questions in the RFP. So, now we have, uh, an amazing turnout of, of firms that were interested. We sent out 24, uh, to 24 firms. We got 10 back. I was like astounded. 10? You know, 12 years ago, we got four, and we were lucky to get four. So, we got 10. So, now we have 10 firms who are vying for the spot of one, and John Galbraith and I read all of these. And honestly, we couldn't take a single one out of the mix. We really couldn't say, "We're going to pick six of you to interview, and four of you, sorry, haven't made the grade, because we've decided that you, you can't make the grade. We can't do that." So, we read them all and said, "All of you are going to get your shot at an opportunity to be heard." So, we have 10 firms vying, and we have now 15 people who are on our interview selection panel. And thankfully, Dr. Buck sent the email out to our Facility Master Plan Committee, to our Facility Master Plan Oversight Committee, and the Executive Council, and bang, we had 15 people who wanted to sign up. So, we have a large group of selection committee members and 10 architectural firms to focus and select the firm over a two-day interview period. So, logistically, this is becoming very challenging now, because you've got a lot of strong opinions in the room about their particular area of expertise. We've got people who are very much in the architectural, business, construction world. We've got all, all of our levels of, uh, school administrators who are involved. We've got, we had Aqui who represented sort of the central office. Myself, John Galbraith, and another, uh, person in the Buildings and Grounds Office were involved in this process. So, what we, we carefully thought about how it is that we're going to bring these people in, and we want to give, have everyone give us a 40-minute focus presentation. So, we took those 24 questions in the RFP, and we pushed them down into 10 essential elements. And we sent those, to those 10 firms in advance, and we said, "This is the focus of your presentation. You need to hit these high points. We're going to be marking scores based upon your hitting each of these 10 points." And our scoring rubric had those 10 points. Talk to us about these key essential things. Are you local? What's the size of your firm? What is your wheelhouse capacity? Do you do it in-house? How do you work with your, with your clients, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So, all but, all of them, but one, didn't follow that criteria list in lockstep as, as they should have, and they didn't score well. But all of these firms came in, they went right through their paces, and we scored them accordingly. So, the qualitative is based upon every single one of our 15 people saying what they believe on a Likert scale of one to five, five being great, one being poor. And everybody scored based upon their relative standing experience with their filter, right? But consistently the same throughout with all 10. So, you can see the results of that in the qualitative scores. And now, really, this is low-tech. I have nothing for you on, on PowerPoint, but I'm going right now to a page you have in your board packet that shows all of these 10 firms and 15 committee members numbered one through 15. And you can see that we've got three high scores, KPE, Leggett, and Soleim Lang. And you can see that each one of them scored qualitatively a little bit different than when we add up their quantitative score. And quantitative score is very simple. It's based upon price. And we had 40% of the value based upon price. So, the lowest, the lowest-priced firm scores the maximum number of points, and then it's proportionately lower the higher the price goes. Makes sense? Okay. So, Leggett scores the full 40 points because they are the lowest-priced firm of the 10. We had to actually take out one of our, uh, firms, and we have actually nine, because they were incomplete and didn't follow all of the instructions in the RFP appropriately. So, now we've got three scores. And these three scores were the basis for a conversation after everybody was gone, and we got all the scores tallied. Now, we're just talking with 15 people in the room. What do you think? And there were a lot of folks who were very, very much concerned around, "We want K-12 experience," or, "We want somebody local in our community." And these are the things that we talked about. And frankly, Todd, one of Todd's questions is, "Well, why did it take you two rounds?" Actually, my hope was we could march through and actually have the firm selected with one interview series. I wanted unanimous. So, those were the, that's where the bar was set. I wanted unanimous, and we wanted to have the firm, and we wanted to move on, but we couldn't, because there are strong opinions in the room with disagreements around. So, what we did, and really, we had KPE in here, but really, the conversation was mostly around Leggett and Soleim Lang. That's where the two most strong opinions were emerging out of the group of 15. KPE is in here in round two, because they scored higher. They were in between Soleim Lang and Leggett. So, we thought, the fair thing to do is to bring in the two that seem to be the strong runners from a, sort of the emotional, passionate, this is what we feel about these firms, as opposed to what we see from a, more of a systematic viewpoint. So, we brought in KPE, Soleim Lang, and, and Leggett. And this time, instead of using those 10 questions, we said, "We want to create six," it turned out to be six questions, "we want to create, get answers to these questions that are driving us crazy. We want to know, if you don't have K-12 experience, convince us it doesn't matter. If you're not local, convince us that you're not being local. It's not going to have an adverse effect on having our construction community accept you as an architectural firm and bring general contractors in to the fold and bid jobs for us, because we've seen quite a drop-off." Today, tonight, at the Board meeting, there are two major projects with two quotes on each. That's it. We need better than that. And so, we had those six questions around, convince us local doesn't really matter, or it does matter. Convince us K-12 experience doesn't matter, or it does matter. And convince us that you're going to work with our, our contractors, and you're going to get to know them, and you're going to bring them into the fold, that they're going to trust you. So, that's why these questions now were veered differently, because we already know you qualitatively. We already know you from a cost standpoint, and now, we're taking these costs off the table, and we want to know you and how you answer these six questions. That was round two. So, they came in, and all three knocked them out of the park. Bang, bang, bang. They went down each one of those specific focus points and gave us their presentations. And the second exhibit is based upon that effort, and now, these are, again, a Likert scale, one to five, on questions one through six. How do you feel about each of these firms? And frankly, you'll see, four of those that were in the room said they prefer Leggett. One preferred KPE, but the remainder preferred Soleim Lang. If you really look at the data, and so, the scores are what they are. But again, this is a scoring summary, but engage, we engaged in conversation again. What do you think about Brad Lang? Brad Lang did an amazing job with Soleim Lang. His firm is doing the, uh, the old Iowa building downtown, uh, the insurance company that is expanding their headquarters in Cedar Rapids, United Fire and Casualty. That's a project with Soleim Lang. The new fire station, the, the one that's relatively new, not a few years old, that's Soleim Lang. The, uh, transportation, downtown transit, transit center, that's Soleim Lang. And there's a number of things that Soleim Lang has done in our community, nothing to do with K-12. But there's one thing that Brad Lang never even mentioned during the interview process, because I think it just speaks very well to, to Brad Lang. And that is that he was formerly with OPN in the K-12 market, with K-12 experience. He didn't say to that, he didn't tell us that, but we know that. And so, he does have K-12 experience from his prior position at OPN, and he started his own firm, Soleim Lang, here in Cedar Rapids. So, at the end of the day, with all these things, and there's 15 people, there are 14 other people who are not here today, who have opinions and can speak very well about their experience of selecting the Architective Record. So, why two sessions? Because we absolutely had to have two sessions, sessions because of, of opinions and strong, strong opinions. Why did we drop costs? Because the second round, really, it didn't matter. You're talking about a cost of one and a quarter million to $950,000. And you're talking about a whole lot more than just simply $300,000. You're talking about public trust, and what's that value at the end of the day? And I think that this is, this is an emerging theme that came out with a lot of people in the room about what is it, when, how do we put that into perspective, $300,000? And frankly, a lot of the projects that are on this list that called Exhibit A may not come to fruition. That would cause it $300,000 to shrink, the, especially the $4 million project over at Erskine. For an HVAC that is likely, hopefully, if the session provides us an extension of the SAVE. SAVE.
Question. So $300,000, this whole funding, is this out of the SAVE funds? Is this out of PEPAL? It's not out of general fund, is it?
It is not general fund. It is both PEPAL and SAVE qualified.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And these will be PEPAL expenditures because this firm is focused on the PEPAL promise. So these will not be SAVE expenses for this firm. So I think, I want to make sure I have hitting all of these. I think I have. I think I've answered hopefully the questions from Todd. And I appreciate Todd. Todd was at our Oversight Committee meeting, listening attentively. We appreciate the attendance. I think it's, it reflects well on all of us, so.
Other questions from the board for Steve about this contract?
I don't have a question. I just want to compliment you. I think it was very thoughtful and well thought out. I think the process was extensive and you did a great job. So thank you for that. Due diligence was absolutely done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to, again, thank Steve. And again, as a board, it's not our job to, yes, the buck stops here and we will agree, but I didn't sign up to be a board member to interview individual architect firms and so on. I don't see that as our role as a board. Our role is to request input, and Steve did a good job, a great job, of putting together a committee to look at. And this wasn't just, this isn't Steve's decision. This is coming out of a community recommendation. So, you know, as a board, I don't think we could have any, you're doing what we expect you to do. You've brought forth a good recommendation and I thank you for that and your service. Thank you.
Other comments?
So Steve, thanks. One thing I'm kind of wondering, what happens with the transition? Is there anything...
Oh, great question.
Anything we need to be on the lookout for? Will it just be kind of one firm to the other? Projects in progress?
I just want to say that Jim Gerdner, I'm sorry, Gord, I get confused between the Madison Principal and Jim. I believe it's Gordman with Shire Hattery. And this is the Shire Hattery person I'm talking about and I was in the room for the Facility Master Plan Oversight Committee when this conversation was taking place. So it's a bit of an awkward situation for Jim and we let him know in advance that we were going to have this conversation. Very professional, a professional. And so they are very much aware that we're passing the baton on providing the board approval Soleim Lang and providing that we negotiate a contract. Because you're providing us permission now to engage Soleim Lang in a contract and that contract will come back before you in May. Our goal is May 15th, whatever, 14th, to bring a contract before you for your approval. So at any rate, I just want to make sure we say that. But July the 1st is the date of all the work, anything that goes on after June the 30th, July 1 forward is Soleim Lang and through the next five-year period. And there's going to be some trailing off of projects that began in the spring that we're going to be making sure that Shire Hattery is following through until they trail off and they're concluded. So there's going to be sort of a dovetailing in between here, and I have no doubt that Shire will be professional. They've done fine work for us, and I'm certainly that they're going to be interested in the next series of looking for the next architect for the work that we'll be doing with our Facility Master Plan with their elementary buildings.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And we have, we have staff that are in place that'll remain in place too, so that'll help in the transition.
I was going to say, we were, we were at the national conference and we heard that there was a lot of interest in Cedar Rapids, Iowa from architects. So anyway, I think that that was good news.
There was.
And again, Mr. London, we do want to thank you for your pointing these things out. It's good for us as board members to think about different ways of looking at these things and asking questions that we may not have thought about because we do build up relationships with folks like Steve and on here, and we do have a pretty high level of trust with some of the things that are decided in this. And I agree with Gary Anhalt that, you know, as board members, getting into the weeds too far with some of this is not our role, but it is our role to question how the money's being spent and to make sure that we have funds available to do what we need to do for the school district and the kids in the school district. And so, you know, Steve, you're comfortable with this additional $300,000 that may not be $300,000? And this is the best firm? This is what the committee has come forth and told us. The people are from across the community with all kinds of different expertise that build into this decision. So again, I thank you as well for all the work for everyone that went into this and know that there are a lot of factors that it obviously wasn't an easy, clear-cut decision, which sometimes these things aren't. So appreciate that, that effort. So with, with that, are there any other questions for Steve or Dr. Buck? Okay, so with that, this will be a voice vote to allow the administration to move forward with an agreement for the Architectural Firm of Record under BA 18322. And this is a voice vote. So all those in favor of moving forward with this agreement signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. Next, we'll move into board governance, which is related to a closed session. I'll just let the board know, following that, we will have a moment of silence. So the closed session is for evaluation of the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered. Is there someone that would like to make a motion to have us move into closed session at the end of this meeting?
I move that the Board of Education meet in closed session on Monday, April 23rd, 2018, for the purpose of evaluation of professional competency as provided by the Iowa Code Section 25 point, or 21.51I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Bortoning?
Aye.
Director Humblez?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Lavery?
Aye. Thank you. Next, I'll turn it over to Linda Nagel for a moment of silence.
Good evening. I'd like to ask the board to close our meeting in a moment of silence as we recognize the life of one of our bus attendants in transportation. Carols Edward, known as Chip Thompson, passed away on Monday, April 9th, 2018. He began his role as bus attendant with the district on January 11th, 2018. Although Chip was not with us for very long, he was a great asset to the Transportation Department. His fun, loving, and humorous personality was loved by all our students and his peers. Chip will be greatly missed by all those who knew him and loved him. Survivors include his wife Judy, stepdaughter Amber Simmons, stepson Andrew Alberts, five grandchildren, Keegan, Hayden, Kyra, Carter, Hudson, three sisters, Teresa Bartlett, Tracy Cole, Keester, Cloud, and many nieces and nephews. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Chip, let us remember the lives of the students and staff that he has positively impacted as an employee of our school district.
Thank you. If we could just all take a moment of silence. Please give our condolences to Chip and his family. Thank you. I would remind the staff or the school board members that there are a number of activities coming up in May, so please make sure that when you look at the calendars, you have those graduations. It's an awesome time of year to see the amazing accomplishments of our students, and it is, it is just a really busy month and a fun month for all of us. So with that, we are adjourned and we'll take just a few minutes break to use the restroom and get settled in the ante room and move into closed session. Thank you.